From a previous executive session, I invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, who knew we were so popular? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen again. My name is Brent Putnam. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Pat Flynn, Town Manager Julian Suso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, and Selectmen Kevin Murphy and Rebecca Moffett. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise while you're here with us this evening, we ask that you silence it for the time that you're here. Please refrain from any side conversations here in the room or immediately outside in the hallway because it can interrupt our proceedings. If you'd like to speak this evening, and there will be opportunities for public comment, we do have a speaker's policy. It's posted on the door as well as at the lectern. If you would like to speak, please do wait to be called by the chair. When you are recognized, please come to the lecture and identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean that our recording secretary or the folks at home do. And please direct all questions and comments through the chair. If you decide to leave early, please do so quietly because you're leaving early and we still have work to do here. You may record this meeting, if you'd like, under certain conditions. For audio, we ask that you simply announce that you wish to do so. For video recording, you will need to receive permission from the board. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to record this meeting? Okay, hearing none. We'll go to the first item on our agenda, which are announcements and proclamations. Ms. Moffett, you have a proclamation.
Yes. Proclamation for Police Week, whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls Police Week, and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the town of Falmouth play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the town of Falmouth, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibility of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against the deception and the weak, against oppression and intimidation, and whereas the police department of the town of Falmouth has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service. Therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen, call upon all citizens of the town of Falmouth and upon patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th to the 17th, 2014, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for the preserving of the rights and the security of all citizens. Further, we call upon the citizens of the town of Falmouth to observe Thursday, May 15th, 2014, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in order to honor those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, especially our own officer Samuel F. Pierce, who lost his life in the line of duty on August 16th, 1933. I further call upon the citizens of the town of Falmouth to observe a moment of silence on Thursday, May 15th, 2014, in their honor. In witness whereof, we, Brett Putnam, Doug Jones, Mary Pat Flynn, Kevin Murphy, and Rebecca Moffett, have here to under set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed on this fifth day of May, 2014.
Motion and a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition? Unanimous. Ms. Moffett, you had an announcement as well?
Yes, I have an announcement also. On Wednesday, May 7th of this week, the legal women voters will hold the interviews for the candidates for selectmen at 7:30 at the Morse Pond School. That's Wednesday, May 7th, 7:30 at the Morse Pond School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And a related announcement to the Police Week, on Thursday, May 15th, the police department will be holding an observance of Police Officers Memorial Day as they do every year, and that is at the Falmouth Police Department. And we also have this coming week, the town has put together an informational meeting regarding the comprehensive wastewater management plan and the Little Pond wastewater expansion project. This will be next Monday, May 12th. It will be held at the T-Ticket Elementary School in the Cafeteria, and that's at 45 Marivista Avenue Extension. Anyone so interested, welcome there. There will be individuals from the town to answer questions about the sewer, the costs, how it will affect the individual homeowners. And this informational session is specifically intended or targeted towards the individuals, the families who live within the Little Pond Sewer Service area, where they will have to be connected to that. So those individuals who are interested, this is an opportunity to try to get some more information for you. Do we have any other announcements from the board or the Town Manager's office?
No, sir.
All right. Next item on our agenda, we entertain public comment during every meeting. We reserve 10 minutes at the beginning of our meetings so that the public can speak on any items which are not on our agenda this evening. Each individual is limited to two minutes, and when we do get to the 10-minute mark, we have to move on to the other items on our agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Mr. Shearer? I've got you first, then I see a couple of other hands here.
My name's Dan Shearer. I'm in Precinct 6, and I'd like to ask the Board of Selectmen why at town meeting we did not vote to approve the floodplain map. I talked to FEMA today, and they told me the consequences for not, or doing this, are quite severe.
Unfortunately, I cannot provide that answer to you at this point because our policy is simply to listen to public comment. I would direct you, though, to the Town Manager's office, and perhaps we could speak after the meeting if you'd like. If you want to reach out to us, we can try to answer that question for you.
Okay. I just hope we don't have a disaster because we're not going to get any help.
Mr. Smallowitz? I saw your hand up. I'm sorry. Mr. Zweig. I'm getting my Ron's confused. My apologies.
Good evening. I'm Ron Zweig, and I'm the towns representative, thanks to the board, on the Cape Light Compact. And every time I have an opportunity to come to the meeting, I like to draw the town's attention to the energy efficiency programs provided by the Cape Light Compact, and that I encourage all Falmouth residents to call 1-800-797-6699, and you can be helped with this program. And as I've said other times, our operators are waiting, and they can help you with energy efficiency in terms of insulation, in terms of appliances, light bulbs, swimming pool pumps, things that conserve energy basically to save homeowners. And this is all, most of it is paid for, although there are incentives and some subsidies, but most of it's paid for through a charge on all of our electric bills. So it's something we should all try and take advantage of. So I would encourage everyone to look into this and see if it's right for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran, I have you next on the list. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
I know it's been fairly well advertised, and the mobile signs have been put in front of the old voting places, but I just want to remind people one more time that there's no voting at Morse Pond School, East Falmouth School, T-Ticket School, or the PAL, and it all will be at the high school. And also, if someone doesn't want to venture that far out, there is early voting now. They were voting today at the clerk's office. You can go in any day and vote, and you can also get an absentee ballot up until the day before the election. And lastly, the high school may turn out to be quite crowded, and we do have an elderly population. And I just wondered if it was possible that maybe we had a few wheelchairs there, that we could assist people that may have to walk a great distance to get to the polls and a great distance across the floor in the gym. A couple might not be a bad idea. Thank you.
Gentlemen here on the left.
I'm Alan Joffe at 64 Randolph Street, and I'd like to call your attention to the fact that we have a problem on Randolph Street since it's been made dead end, that cars are coming down there and have no place to turn around at the end of the street. They have been going in people's driveways, which the residents are not happy about. But I really fear when the boating season picks up, boats will continue to go down there and sort of get stuck. Some people have gone across people's lawns, by the way. I suggest that you look into putting a sign in the middle of the street at the Marivista and warning people, no turnaround, no boats throughway. Just please look into it. I've talked to the highway superintendent, have gotten nothing from him.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the minutes of meetings. We have April 28, 2014, public session minutes.
Mr. Chair, I remove approval of the minutes of our open meeting, April 28th, as have been presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And we have the executive session minutes for April 28, 2014 as well.
We have a number of those on different pages. Do we want to take them individually to see if we can release any of these?
That would be an excellent idea. So we'll start with the MCAD case.
Remove approval of the executive session minutes for the MCAD case and release, I believe.
Yes.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is for the MCAD case. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
On the issue of the executive session for the prepare for the contract negotiations, call firefighters. We can also approve these, and are we ready to release these also, I believe?
Yes.
And release. Motion and a second. This is for the contract negotiations for the call firefighters. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
And the executive session, this is a continued discussion on contract negotiations for Town Manager. I move approval and release of these.
Second.
Pardon me, Mr. Chairman. A minor item. On the very last sentence in those, the word "of" is on there. Two locations, and I think the first one is extraneous.
The very last paragraph on the second page, where it says, looks forward.
Continuing being of service?
Yeah, looks forward to continuing being, and take out "of."
Okay, so with that correction?
Remove approval and release.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve and to release to the public. This is the contract negotiation for the Town Manager. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
The executive session minutes for the Sirad Wetland case, I would move approval and not release at this time.
Second.
For the Wetland case, not release. Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
And finally, executive session minutes for the preparation for cranberry bog leasing. I would move approval, and I believe we can release these since we're making an announcement about that. I understand also.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the assistance of cranberry bog leasing in the executive session and approval to release. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And that brings us to the summary of actions. Go through these. If anyone would like to hold one, please let me know. Request for special agricultural liquor license. Okay. I'm going to hold that. Item number two is to authorize Town Manager to attend the Spring Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference. Item number three is determined, I'm going to hold that. Item number four is to sign the warrant for the annual town election, May 20, 2014. Item number five, I'm going to hold.
I move articles, or items two and four for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Mr. Murphy, you held item number one.
Item number one, I don't have a problem with the issue that this is an agricultural wine license, but I would suggest to the board that we require on the license, and I do know that some of these particular vendors have liability insurance, this specifically is on town property, that we require at least a half a million dollar liability insurance. And there's a conflict on the license itself. The license states that it would be no more than five one-ounce samples. In the literature from the applicant itself, it would be no more than five half-ounce samples. So I'd like the license to reflect both the five half-ounce samples as a maximum, as well as a requirement of a minimum of $500,000 liability insurance, naming the town of Falmouth as the insured.
Okay, and that is your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I did have one other question. I understand there's a possibility of a second winery being part of this also, and I understand the agreement from the farmer's market is they'll only have one winery at a time. But if we grant liquor licenses to two places, don't they kind of have the right to do it? And is that something that the farmer's market can take away from them?
The farmer's market is the one that leases the space. It's not us. We have nothing to do with that.
So they can control it?
I don't know, they can control it. We don't have the license in front of us tonight anyways.
Right.
It's usually whoever comes first gets it.
Can we grant two licenses?
Yes, you can. These agricultural licenses can.
Great, okay.
Ms. Moffett?
Kevin, when you were speaking, that just in the first request that was coming from Patrolman Doyle, it says no more than a half ounce while over on the application, it says one ounce.
I had suggested that we note on the license itself, there will be five half-ounce samples.
Okay.
As well as the near literature, they say the same thing, half-ounce.
Okay.
Any further questions? Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And you hold number three, Mr. Murphy?
Yes. A little uncomfortable bringing this up, but I'm a little uncomfortable with granting a waiver of a conflict of interest. It's just, it's too apparent. I'm just very uncomfortable. We have a general manager of a private granted golf course in this community who would serve on the Golf Advisory Committee for the Falmouth Country Club. Whether you say it's a competitor or not, I honestly believe that it would be construed in the public that it is a competitor. Granted, the individual probably has a wealth of knowledge, but this is an advisory committee. We do have a professional management company there. We're looking for folks to help advise the town and be in the middle of this. The perception here might outweigh the benefits. That's, I just want to bring it to the board's attention.
Well, that was my initial reaction, too, that we have, it isn't as if we don't have people that might be interested in doing this, and that if there are other people who are interested, then why would we appoint someone who has an appearance of a conflict of interest? And as you know, the Ethics Commission has a way of dealing with that, which is why this is before us tonight. There's been the individual whose Michael Lawrence has submitted full disclosure information. The fact that we are aware of it makes it acceptable in a certain sense, but I also think that the two operations are entirely different. Woods Hole being a totally private club and operating with revenues from the members. And then we have the Falmouth Country Club, which really operates from revenues from anybody who wishes to play. It's a public course. But it would also seem that someone who has the experience that Michael Lawrence has at the Woods Hole Club could be of value to the Golf Advisory Committee. And as long as that conflict of interest is disclosed, and we make it public and we accept it, and that we follow it and know that he, if there were any occasion where any decision that he might have to make would not conflict with his job at the Woods Hole, nor would it conflict with the Falmouth Golf Course because of his job. I think this covers it well. I think we ought to give him the opportunity to do it. I mean, obviously, the Golf Advisory Committee is interested in having him be there. They feel that he could be of value to the committee. He's representing the Chamber of Commerce, is my understanding. So I know what you're saying. I think as long as the public knows about it, and that they know that we know about it, and that we have in writing this disclosure, and we can monitor it, I think we're okay.
That's part of the reason I brought that up this evening. I wanted folks to understand that we're acknowledging that he has acknowledged that there could be some conflicts, and he understands that they are two different distinct entities, one being private, one being more of a public course. And I wanted to make sure the folks in the public out there do, that we've looked at this, and we've looked at it hard. We're going through a very important time in the next year, a year and a half at Falmouth Country Club, because we'll be in the process of issuing a new RFP for a new operator. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of that we've acknowledged this.
If the decision of the contract were up to the Golf Advisory Committee as opposed to up to us, I'd be much less comfortable with it. The fact that it's advisory committee, and they're actually making very few decisions, we make them or the company makes them, makes me feel more comfortable with it being here.
Part of this process, the reason I brought this up, I wanted the public to know that later that this didn't come out, oh, the guy is at Woods Hole, and I think this is a conflict. This board has been diligent, Town Council has been diligent, and the State Ethics Commission has been diligent in regard to this. So I wanted to make sure that everyone acknowledged that we've already addressed this as we move forward. Okay?
What is the length of time that he has on the committee?
Three years.
It's not, it's not in anything I've read.
Three years.
It's a three.
Three-year appointment.
Okay, so the fact that there is going to be change when he's only had one year, it would be good that he be there for three years. Okay.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve?
There's a motion here.
Okay.
It's written in the.
Okay, I see. Motion, I move that Michael Lawrence, an employee of the Woods Hole Golf Club, be authorized to vote as a member of the Golf Advisory Committee on matters affecting the Falmouth Country Club.
Second.
Keep a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. And finally, I held the last item, which is the cranberry bog lease, the referral to the Conservation Commission. I wanted to make sure that this motion has a couple of items. First, that we are declaring that the current contract with the grower is essentially null and void, that the grower has backed out of the contract, and there's no legal recourse available to the town other than to declare the contract null and void so we can proceed. Second is, of course, we're going to refer this to the Conservation Commission because it is, they are charged with managing the property. And third, that we ask that the Conservation Commission do what it can to ensure that the bogs are leased according to the town meeting vote, which brought us to this point. So those are the three points that I'd like to make sure are in the motion. Anyone want to make a motion?
I move that we approve the referral to the Conservation Commission.
With those three points?
With those three points.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Next item on our agenda, we have a change of manager of an all-alcoholic common victual license, the Falmouth Property Restaurant, LLC, doing business as British Beer Company.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, I want to disclose that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Good evening. My name's Adam Kudo.
And you're going to be the new manager?
General manager, yes.
Mr. Jones?
We do have a report from John Doyle, the police department, that they have reviewed the packet, and the department has not had a problem with their request for the transfer.
I just wanted to state that Mr. Kudo has a long history with the British Beer Company, with Falmouth Property Restaurant in various locations. So this isn't new, the position isn't new to him, it's just the location that is new. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So I would move approval of the change of manager.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda, we have a presentation regarding the water filtration plant, the override, that will be on the May 20th ballot. Mr. Suso, I'm going to defer to you. I think we have staff available for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I believe that Public Works Director Jack is waiting in the hallway, so he should be here momentarily.
We have some signatures to.
Thank you for the opportunity to present Long Pond. Most of this is really for the public benefit, if you will. Yes, I don't know which ones to shut off. Most of this is really for the public's benefit at home, in order that at the town meeting we didn't have the opportunity to give an overall presentation on some of the benefits and where we are with respect to the Long Pond filtration process. So where we are, it's really a regulatory requirement, a long-term to enhance surface water treatment rule as well as disinfection byproduct rule, changed recently, and that drove surface water source to have to either disinfect with additional disinfection or filter. So that's what started this process to begin with. That also happened at around the time of the boil water order, so everybody was acutely sensitive to the issue. We completed this feasibility study where we looked at various options. That was presented to the town. The town approved, meaning the board as well as town meeting, approved an ultimate design for a filtration system. And right where we are now is town meeting appro- And right where we are now is town meeting approved construction funding in order to go to the ballot. So if it's approved at the ballot, then we proceed with the project. This was the process that got us to where we are. This was the original evaluations that were done on Long Pond, the various options that were presented. They ranged from sixteen and a half million dollars to forty-seven million dollars. I can eliminate the first two right off the bat, that you can see that they are strictly additional disinfection only. They take absolutely nothing out of the water. They weren't required to be piloted, because they were chemical in nature, and so a desktop evaluation would have been sufficient for that. The next three processes that you see that have a red line, a red box in the column there, we can dismiss those predominantly because of the pilot plant performance. It did not perform well during the pilot study, therefore, it would not be acceptable by DEP, nor would it achieve the objectives, as you can see on the slide. The option that the board adopted, and ultimately the town adopted at town meeting, is the last one. I'll go to the two before it, the one for forty million dollars and the one for thirty-nine million dollars. As you can see, that neither of those were able to handle taste and odor complaints, and one of them was not able to handle algae. But I think probably the more important items to focus on is the lack of an additional disinfectant that the selected process has. It has two disinfectants in the last process. There is ozone, which is a very powerful disinfectant, as well as chlorine at the end of the process. Neither of the two preceding processes has that second disinfectant, so it offers a much broader barrier of protection that becomes important. Secondly, where it says GAC in the last process, that's granular activated carbon, that's the equivalent of a Brita filter, or a pure water filter. That's the process that they use for removal of a contaminant, and neither of the processes before that has that. Hence, that's one of the reasons why they're not able to achieve the taste and odor removal. So one of the bigger problems, I think, that the town was facing here, there's several million dollars difference in cost, but ultimately, probably the worst thing you can do is to build a plant and wind up with taste and odor problems, because perception is everything. And I would also point out, taste and odors are not just aesthetic concerns, they are caused by decomposition of organic matter and microbial. So there are also health concerns as well.
Just a question on the last one. Which of the chemicals in that train actually treats taste and odor?
I'm sorry?
Which chemical in that train, the last one, treats taste and odor?
All of them.
Or handles treats it?
All of them. All of them play a role in taste and odor removal and reduction, and I'll be explaining that a little bit later on in the processes.
Okay, so and some of the others don't include enough to handle it, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
I know we went through this before, but...
The amount of chlorine in the last one, you'll explain that's way reduced from what...
Dramatically reduced, yes. So from an objective perspective, we obviously need to maintain and achieve regulatory compliance, so that's always an overriding concern. And in order to do that, there are really three things that we look at: physical, chemical, and microbiological characteristics of water. You want it to be clear, tasteless, and odorless. I would also point out that a lot of people talk about the taste of water, how it tastes good. Pure water has no taste, all right? It's just cool and refreshing, so it feels good. But we want it to be clear, tasteless, and chemically safe, pathogen-free. Pathogens are bacteria that are considered harmful to man. So it's not to say that you're going to sterilize the water and remove all organisms, as much as it is those that are pathogenic. And I will try to get through this rather quickly. I see we have a packed audience and a lot of questions, I'm sure, for the rest of the evening. In building a plant now, it's going to be a substantial investment for the town, so we want to try to not only deal with what the problems are that we have now, but make sure that the processes are going to be capable of handling other things that may come down the road that we're not already aware of. So CEC stands for contaminants of emerging concern. The federal government, EPA, has a list known as the CCL, the contaminant candidate list, of which a number of these CECs are on it. So they monitor those regularly to determine what the future contaminants are that are going to be regulated. PCPs are personal care products. These represent those things that go down the household drain, go in the toilet, go down the dishwasher, the washer, the sink, and what have you. So they're all the beauty products that we use, the household cleaners. And if they go down into a septic system, then they ultimately get into the water and into the environment. And then, of course, pharmaceuticals generally go down the drain in one way, shape, or form. They too wind up in the environment. Right now, most of these are very low concentrations, but then again, they have cumulative effects that haven't been properly evaluated yet. The processes that the town has selected are very effective to varying degrees at taking a number of these chemicals out of the water. So it positions the town very well for the future. So Long Pond, right now, is over 115 years old. Its last upgrade was 1993, so it's been nearly a quarter of a century since we've done any major work out there. It's absolutely necessary for Long Pond. We have a number of supplies. The Long Pond serves sixty percent, sixty to sixty-five percent of our water supply in the season, during the height of the season, and roughly fifty percent on a year-round basis. So there's really no getting away from it, and especially from a seasonal community. It provides us a wide range of flexibility. So it's an absolutely critical source that we have. This is what it looked like early 1900s. The building on the left-hand side that has the tall stack was a coal bunker and boilers, because the plant processes and pumps were steam-driven engines at that time. And this is as it looked from the gruze pond side. This is what it looks like today from the Long Pond side, and I would point out, too, that that is the original slate roof on the building. There's been questions brought up about if we build a new plant, what happens to this plant? This plant is on a national historic register, so there will not be any demolition of the plant, so it would be preserved as an original pump station for the town and maintained that way. This is a conceptual rendering of what the new plant would look like. Its footprint is about 22,000 square feet, so it's not small by any stretch of the imagination, but it contains all of the mechanical and chemical treatment processes within the building. But that's what your money is buying. Pond turnover is one of the bigger problems that we have, and it's a seasonal problem. I won't get into the technicalities of this, but I would say that this is representing degrees in centigrade, four degrees centigrade, thirty-nine degrees Fahrenheit. That's when water's at its greatest density. So in the summer time, typical natural lakes and ponds will stratify, so you have warmer water at the top, then a thermocline layer in the hypolymanian is the deeper water, and it's usually cooler. So then, in the fall, when the surface water temperature starts going down to thirty-nine degrees, that water now is more dense than water that is either warmer or colder than that is. So it forces the water to turn over in the pond and stir up the bottom. The same thing can happen after the winter. The winter, the surface temperature is very cold, so it's below thirty-nine degrees. As the surface temperature warms up to thirty-nine degrees, it forces another pond turnover. In our particular instance, we also have more than these seasonal turnovers, because they can be storm-related as well. So when we get a nor'easter that has strong winds pushing in one direction, has the same capacity to be able to turn a pond even without this. The problem with that is that when that pond gets stirred up, and I'll be getting into that in a little bit, this is it. This is Long Pond. This is all we have, is chlorine. We also use hydroxide in order to raise the pH, but for public health protection, this is it. It removes nothing. We filter nothing. All we do is hit it with chlorine, and a lot of chlorine. This is very subtle. On the right hand is a clear water sample. On the left would be a turbid water sample. This would be representative of what pond water might look like after a mild turnover. So it doesn't seem as though it's a lot, but this is what happens. This is part of the pilot study that we did. That's the same water. That is an eight-inch diameter plexiglass tube, introduced a coagulant, which neutralizes the electrical charges of the suspended solids and allows them to agglomerate together. And now you can see them starting to agglomerate and settle out. So this is Long Pond's water that you're looking at during the pilot study. After you add a coagulant like that, and it starts to agglomerate, then you want to get it out of the water. So the next process, immediately following coagulation, is dissolved air flotation. This is that water when it comes to the surface. So unlike conventional coagulation, where it forces the particulates to get heavier and settle out on the bottom, and they get scraped off, this process here is unique, and especially for us, because most of our problems are dealing with algae. Algae wants to float, not sink. So this takes advantage of that, brings it up to the surface. But that, too, is the pilot study at Long Pond.
Is it fair to say that without this filtration, that there is in our water system now?
Yes.
So I think that's a picture that will tell folks a lot. That is what we're drinking ultimately now, and that's why we need a water filtration plant.
Yes. And this is just the first process of removal, and this is Long Pond. This would be not the next step. The next step would be ozonization, all right? But this is the filtration part that comes after it. This is only showing you cleaning a filter. This isn't showing you within an operation. When a filter gets taken out of service in order to clean it, on the left-hand side, you can see just how dirty that filter is, all right? After it's been in service for several hours, maybe like anywhere from 24 to 36 hours. And then, when it finishes its backwash cycle, anywhere from 10 to 20 minutes later, the water comes out clear, and then the filters return to the surface. But this is what our filters are going to look like when they are in their cleaning mode, even after we've already taken out the particulates with dissolved air flotation. There's still going to be a fair number of particulates that are going to have to be removed. This is just to show you what we already have now. This is the Crook-upon plant, which services the Coona Mesa well, as well as the Crook-upon well, gives the plant capacity of two and a half million gallons a day. So this plant is in operation and has been for several years now. These are the filtration processes and treatment processes that we have. An air stripper takes off VOCs, or volatile organic chemicals. This has manganese-green sand filtration, which is a unique type of filter media specifically for iron and manganese, followed by activated carbon adsorption, which our new plant will also have, and then we adjust it for pH and disinfection.
And this system is different for two reasons. One is, it's not dealing surface water, it's dealing with aquifer water.
Correct.
And it also has different... It had different regulations when we put this in than what we're under right now. Is that correct to you?
Correct, yes.
So it's grandfathered, essentially?
I know that these were a number of questions that I heard on the street. Well, why do I care? I drink bottled water, so this doesn't matter to me. You can't escape town water. You have to bathe. You have to bathe the children. You have to drink... You may not have to drink the water, but your pets may have to drink the water. You're going to wash vegetables with it. You're going to do your dishes with it. You're going to wash your clothes with it. I would also point out that whenever we would have something similar to a boil water order, that's not unique for any specific microbe or microbiological contaminant, and if a person has open wounds and takes a shower, it is possible to get an infection in those circumstances. So I did want to spend a minute on this, because this is where we are. This is the process, the system that the town has selected. Coagulation slash dissolved air flotation is the first step in the process. A coagulant's introduced, which causes the particles to be able to agglomerate or stick together. They will then float to the surface, because the water is also aerated. Small air bubbles are put in there to facilitate that, and then they're scraped off at the top. Next process is ozone. This is very important, I think, for the town, because between ozone as a disinfectant and disinfection with chlorine as a disinfectant at the end of the process, we have two disinfection processes built into the system. The primary purpose of this, however, is not necessarily as a disinfectant, even though it's very effective. Its primary purpose is to reduce the compounds that cause taste and odor, and they're some of the things that we're the most afraid of. So these taste and odor compounds, a lot of them can consist of SoCs, VOCs. SoCs are synthetic organic contaminants, and VOCs are volatile organic contaminants. It'll also oxidize any iron and manganese that we have, which we do have in the pond. If I took a glass of water that was loaded with iron in a ferrous or a soluble state, it would look crystal clear. Then if you introduce it into oxygen and/or an oxidant such as chlorine, it'll turn brown instantaneously. That's what happens when clothes go in the washer and they introduce chlorine in order to clean the whites, and the whites come out rusty instead. They precipitated the iron out of solution when they added the chemical to the water. So this reduces organics and also reduces the contaminants of emerging concern. Filtration is capable of removing particulates, and this particular type of filter is unique because it's dual media filter, which means it's sand and granular activated carbon, so it's going to serve two roles. It will serve as a physical straining device through the sand and the carbon, but granular activated carbon, as I said, is very similar to a Brita or a pure water filter, and they have interstitial spaces where the carbon is activated under heat, which causes it to fracture. And those contaminants that are either organic, synthetic organics, or volatile organics, organic in nature, have a natural affinity to be attracted to carbon. So that's the principle. And so it's not straining it out, it's taking it out in a soluble form. The chemical wants to be attracted to the surface of the carbon, and then ultimately, over time, the carbon becomes used up, if you will, and would have to be replaced. So one of the other major benefits here with having ozone in the process, ozone dramatically increases the longevity of the carbon, because a carbon change-out is in the range of about $400,000. Without ozone preceding it, we'd probably be doing it once every two years. With ozone, it'd be about once every five to six years.
And without the coagdaft, we'd be doing it about once a month.
Yeah, it's... Well, we probably wouldn't be able to do it at all. Okay. TTHMs are trihalomethanes. Those are also what everyone is afraid of. In the 1980s, it was learned that when you have organic matter and you put it in contact with carbon, or carbon chlorine, you form trihalomethanes. So it's taking a methane molecule, and it is displacing the atoms of hydrogen and replacing them with chlorine atoms and changing the chemical makeup. Those are suspected and known carcinogens. So here, with our particular plant, because we use an excessive amount of chlorine in order to avoid filtration, as we've done in the past, we also have an excessive amount of organic matter, because Long Pond is a kettle hole. It's a trap. It's a natural trap. What goes in stays in there until it decomposes, so it doesn't have any tributaries feeding it or leaving it, doesn't have the opportunity to flush itself, if you will. So this will also reduce the precursors for forming trihalomethanes. Then, of course, we have the final process, which is disinfection. Disinfection in this case would be sodium hypochlorite, which is the equivalent of a high-grade bleach. That will inactivate organisms. It's not quite as effective as ozone, but it provides a longer range of effect in the distribution system, because you can have Poland Springs water at the source, but we have a 100-year-old piping system. As our chairman pointed out before, which came first, chicken or the egg? We have problems in both, problems at the source, problems within the distribution system. So even with a plant like this, if it had Poland Springs water coming out of the source, put it in that 100-year-old piping system going over 400 miles to get to your house, we need to be able to protect people on the way. So post-disinfection, or final disinfection, is an important process as well. Because of all of the plant processes, however, right now at Long Pond, we use gaseous chlorine, which is high-strength chlorine, it's better than 99% pure. We use a lot of it, because we are mandated to do so. This process will dramatically reduce the amount of chlorine and make that chlorine much more effective out in the system, because there are fewer organics going to be floating around in the system or have already taken them out. Do we need it, do we want it? We are required on the long-term to enhance surface water treatment rule, and this has been an evolutionary process over almost 15 years, where we either have to filter the source or add additional disinfection. The disinfection by-product rule changed. It changed on how we calculate and where we physically take the samples, so it made it much more stringent. Last year, we had a notice of exceedance on the trihalomethanes that we were required to put out. It's not that we did anything differently, but because the regulations changed on how it is calculated, it meant that the town exceeded the limit. So we do want to try to reduce that, and this will go a long way toward doing that. What everybody wants is safe, clean water all of the time, so obviously, what everybody needs is safe, clean water all of the time, but with what we have, you cannot give that. And everybody that lives here knows that we don't give that. Every year, the complaints start with the taste and the odors and the chemical analysis. So what we need are to have a filtration system in place, which provides the multiple barriers that are necessary. I didn't want to get into this in too much detail, but I did want to point out some of the water rates for other communities of larger, smaller, comparable size. Falmouth is on the bottom, and we'll have two spots for us down here at the bottom. The first one up here is our existing rate, $99 a year for the minimum charge, and $2.80 per 100 cubic feet for our excess charge. I wanted to be perfectly clear and open about this, because we're going to build the plant, and here I'm going to... and here I'm going to tell you about the capital cost on it. But then again, we're going to have operational costs after this plant goes online. It's not going to run itself. It's not going to run for the same amount of money. It's going to cost more. So what we have here for the adjusted rates on the bottom here, it includes the capital and the O&amp;M. These are estimated costs that I came up with as to what we can expect to see. It means that we would have a 50% increase on the minimum, taking it to 148 a year, and we would have a 30% increase on the excess charge, taking it to about 367. So when you consider that roughly half of the cost of the capital or the construction of this plant is going to be carried under the levy along with the wastewater, the other half of that would be under the water rate, and it would take about 30% on the minimum, 15% on the excess to achieve the extra that we need for the capital. But then for the O&amp;M costs, all right, it's about another $700,000. So then we need another, where was I at, 20% on the minimum and another 15% on the excess. So for covering all of the capital and the O&amp;M, this is what we're looking at, at an increase in cost. Now, those costs are comparable across the board to some of these, and you'll notice that some of the other communities may have smaller annual minimums here. Let me see, there's a couple of them that have a good example. I think these two here, 63 and 90 are both lower on our minimums. Their excesses are roughly equivalent, but look at this over here. They have an excess range. They have what's known as an ascending block structure. Any place that you see that's over in this right-hand column, and that means that you're going to have your minimum charge that you have to pay, then you're going to have another charge for so many 100 cubic feet, and then the more you use, the more it's going to cost. And you can see that some of those rates are deliberately punitive, $1,240 per 100 cubic feet. Okay? Now, this is something that the town may want to consider when we do go into a rate-structure mode. So for these rates here, nothing would change now, nothing would change next year. This is really anticipated to be year 2016 is when the rates would actually need to change to accommodate that.
And those rates are a suggestion we have not voted on, we haven't proceeded, just this is one way it would look that would cover it?
That's it. That's just my projection of a number on the minimum and the excess, but the board will feel free to be able to adjust it, however, and look at a number of different alternative scenarios, but that'll be entirely up to the town.
And it's also worth pointing out that one of the reasons why this is being suggested and recommended is that if we put all of the costs under the levy, essentially, we're allowing some organizations and individuals to avoid paying for the water. For example, Falmouth Hospital is a nonprofit, so they don't pay any property tax. They do pay a water bill, and so by splitting this between the levy, property tax, and the water bill, it means that every organization in town that uses water, whether it's the Falmouth Hospital or the institutions in Woods Hole, which are also nonprofit, they're going to have to pay for their water, so they will contribute to the, to the bottom line with this plant.
Absolutely correct. So this would be the proposed plant site. The board has a site evaluation report. What we have here is this is just an overview of the Long Pond area, and this over here is a bathymetric map of Long Pond, and I'm, I put these side by side in order that I can link them in a moment. Right now, the plant is located down here on this isthmus between Bruce Pond and Long Pond. So this area here, all through here is Goodwill Park. One of the sites, first sites to be looked at was this one here, which is the old gravel pit slash firing range. So that was considered non-suitable if for no other reason, one of the most important aspects, it is no longer a gravel pit because they hit groundwater. So the overall elevation here, there's, there are ranges, but for the most part, the overall elevation here is at 10, and the elevation of Long Pond is at 10. And Long Pond at that elevation is just a visual representation of the groundwater, so this is no different than digging down at the beach until you hit water, and that's the level that you're looking at when you look at the sound. So this here is a site that is actually in the water itself, if you will. Then these three sites right here are covered by a critical area mapped out by the Natural Endangered Species Program as a critical core aquatic habitat and critical core aquatic buffer area. So that just means that the bar goes way up when it comes to trying to get something permitted within those zones. So then that takes us to the site up here. It is a 39-plus acre site. To try to get an idea of exactly which site this is, this area right up here in the corner is the town tree farm that is, is used periodically by the town for years, several years. The plant would be located roughly in the center of the parcel. That way, it would have easy access for any utilities and road access from Gifford Street and a direct line access for an intake going into Long Pond. Now, what's important here on this bathymetric map, this isthmus area is where the pond is right now, and these various shades that it's showing here, blue, dark blue is the deepest area of the pond, so that's in the 60-foot range, and these areas here are about in the 30-foot range, well, a little bit more. The light green is about 35 feet. But this little area right here, almost looks like the sandbar, that's at roughly 30 feet. So what we have is this area right here is where we currently draw our water from. Whenever it pulls water into this little alcove, if you will, bathymetric alcove, it's almost like a separate pond unto itself that's relatively shallow. Where we would be going is up here in this corner right here with an intake in order to pull deeper water, which has a better quality, it's cooler, so it'll have a more pleasant taste and appearance, if you will, and has a number of other benefits over this small area that we're pulling from right now with shallow intakes. So that's one of the better reasons for this particular site is being able to access this deeper area of Long Pond for overall better water quality. I think that this statement is very apropos for where the government is across the board at the federal level, state level, and local level, that there's been a lot said over the years about water quality and infrastructure problems. I know here in the Commonwealth, we have the Water Infrastructure Finance Commission. The recently completed its studies because of the state of the infrastructure in the Commonwealth has been neglected across the board, and a substantial amount of money is going to be necessary in order to bring it up to where the public believes that it needs to be today. So these were the recommend, this was the recommended process. We are currently into design, and design will be completed this year. The goal is to fund it at 46 and a half million dollars. We've already gone through town meeting, which have made it through town meeting, and hopefully, it's going to make it at the May ballot. We do have to have it at the May ballot. If we do not have a funding appropriation in place by June, then we have no SRF opportunity. This plant is currently number two on the state's SRF list, so we are in place for 2% loan.
I just want you to explain SRF.
I'm sorry. State revolving fund, all right? So it's an opportunity for large-scale projects to go onto the state where they will give the town a loan at a low interest rate. In this particular case, it's 2%. So that's almost always generally below market rates. And right now, as I said, we're number two on that list, but there are deadlines to be met. The funding appropriation has to be in place by June. If that does not occur at this May ballot, then that goes away and we start at zero. This is a highly competitive list, all right? So we had a favored spot, if you will, on that list. So then if it passes at the May ballot, we would build the plant, and construction could actually start at the end of 2014.
Ms. Mark.
How long have we been on that list?
That just came out.
And we came in second, and it just came out?
Yes. This is a public health issue. That's really the bottom line. It's not an infrastructure issue. It's not a building issue. It's a public health issue, and we have economic health, community health, personal health, but they are all related. Ultimately, this is going to be a very personal decision at the ballot. Everybody in town is going to have the opportunity to weigh in on it. My hope is that everybody will want to build this plant, not that we have to build this plant or we should build this plant, but that we would want to build this plant. From an economic perspective, it's fatal for a seasonal community to begin with, and that's just speaking of the economics to have a water problem, if you will. Overall, for a community, most communities are proud of their infrastructure. They're proud of their water system. They're proud of whatever departments that they have. And from a personal health perspective, I think everybody has the concerns. Everybody shares those concerns, and I think right now, we're probably at a very low ebb, and it's not just Falmouth. I think there's many communities that go into boil water orders, and the public overall is just disenfranchised and disillusioned with public water systems. So I think that this goes a long way to restoring that confidence. So Long Pond may seem calm on the surface, all right, but there are many things that are going on beneath the surface, and it's not just Long Pond here. This is any surface water source. So the bottom line is that there are always problems. This is pure and natural. It looks pretty, but it has its share of problems. Most people would not go down through the pond shore and drink the water, but that's where we are as a community. We pump the water out, we hit it with a disinfectant, and it goes on its merry way. These are all issues, though, that we have to contend with. They're all there, and they will not go away. Birds and animals, we love the watershed, but that's where they live. And I won't say anymore about that. I think it speaks for itself. So it's going to be a personal decision. I don't think there's any question about the need. I would remind everyone, though, that any unfiltered surface water source is a very high risk. It is one of the reasons why the federal government has pushed very hard with these changes in the regulations to force communities that have an unfiltered surface water source to go to filtration. This is what our particular plant is going to be capable of doing with respect to bacteria color, synthetic organic chemicals, volatile organic chemicals, contaminants of emerging concern. I know the acronyms, there are so many of them, but in my opinion, though, is, it is without question, the best investment that Falmouth will ever make is this investment in this source for a number of reasons. And that's it. If you have any questions. I tried not to be too long. I didn't time myself on the clock, but I tried to keep it short.
Right off the top, the state, we, following the boil water order in 2010, we entered into an agreement, if you will, with the state regarding the future of our water system. What was that agreement, and if this fails to pass at the ballot box, what are the consequences thereof?
There are really two consequences. The primary one is going to be the long-term two-enhance-surface-water-treatment rule. We will no longer be, we will not be in compliance with that rule. So we will be in violation, and the day that it fails, probably within a week or so, there'll be an administrative, administrative consent order coming down from the state to force the town to do something because it's a federal requirement. It's not just a state requirement. The agreement that you're referring to is basically indicating that the town will not violate the regulatory standards. This would put us in violation of that agreement because we would then be in violation of the regulatory standards. After October 1st of this year, that is the end of our grace period. We were given a two-year grace period. The state has been, been waiting for this, if you will, for the town to be able to do the right thing on its own, and very pleased where we are today. But if it does not pass, then an ACO will be imminent. It'll be mandatory, and it'll have penalties associated with it.
Financial penalties?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Could you just do a timeline? Let's say that everything is positive after we have the election and the ballot, and that's a positive. What's the next thing in your mind? How's the timeline come? People always seem to think that if, if this is what we voted for, we're going to see some action immediately. I mean, what, from the beginning to the end, and you're satisfied with the end result, will be what year?
Okay. There's no immediacy, if you will, if that's a word. Good things take time. So, design would be completed roughly October of this year.
Okay.
And that would be necessary to file the formal SRF application would also be October of this year.
The state revolving fund, the loan.
Correct. The loan would be October of this year. Immediately thereafter, we would have our approval from the state to be able to proceed. We would then go into construction, so theoretically, that could start at the end of 2014, and it will be at least all of 2015 and be completed sometime early in 2016. The other really good thing about the plant and the site is that this will be a standalone facility. It's not dependent on any of the existing facilities. Hence, you flip the switch, you can turn it on, as opposed to all of the problems that you have when you try to merge an existing facility with a new facility, all right? So that's really one of the major benefits. Once it is completed, it can go online independently of Long Pond. So Long Pond will serve the town during that entire time. We will not have to take it out of operation in order to merge the two systems, and that's a huge benefit and a big black hole when it comes to construction costs.
I think that they possibly think that if they have voted for that, we'll see it by October. So I just, I just wanted the, the times and the dates to...
I'd like to, but 2016.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think the other thing that we keep stressing all along, too, is that this project is not going to be done with an override on two and a half. It's not going to increase the tax rate because we have retired debt now that we can utilize to pay for this. If we don't pass it at this ballot and it, it doesn't go through, we lose that opportunity of the retired debt. Now retired debt goes away, the taxes go down, and the next time we want to bring it back, because we might be ordered to, we would have to do it on an override, most likely, and it would cost a lot more money. So you won't see any increase in your tax rate because of this project if we pass it on this ballot. If we don't, then we are really in a big financial pickle in the future because there would be no other way to fund it except through an override, and that would definitely increase the taxes for everyone. I think it's important to keep that in mind. It's not a threat. It's just that this is good management. I mean, it's good timing to bring projects that, that are this costly in line with retiring debt because it helps everyone to be able to at least consider that it's not going to increase my tax rate to do this. Obviously, it's going to increase the water rates, but that's, that's a given.
If I may, just, just to add to that, about the importance of it, projects of this magnitude go up by a large magnitude just due to inflationary costs and construction costs annually. They will go up by the millions. This particular project here, 18, 17 years ago, would have been 20 million or less, all right? Now we're pushing 50. So it doesn't get any cheaper, and we really cannot wait. So my hope, as I said, I really hope that the town wants, wants to do it.
Are there any questions from the board? Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Ray, if you could bring the microphone back here and if we could get the lights, and we'll start here.
I have a question.
If you could come to the lectern, please.
Oh, I have a question.
Yeah.
He won't leave.
The, the folks at home can't hear anything unless you speak into the microphone. It's not necessarily for amplification, it's so the folks at home can actually...
My name is George Sanbon, I'm a resident of Falmouth. I live in Ballymate. My family and I have been drinking the water for a couple of decades.
If you could direct your comments to the chair, please.
Is he saying the water is unsafe? We've been drinking it for 20 years.
What I would say is that the water meets the regulatory standard of performance and regulatory requirements. Safe is a subjective term. It's biologically, microbiologically safe, but then again, we did have a boil water order. So we're not out there sterilizing the water system, if you will. I think that that's a very difficult question to answer across the board at any town, anywhere in the country on a public water system. Why? Because there's a presumption somehow that people are looking for an absolute, and you can't give the absolute. And what I can say, it is an unfiltered surface water source, and as such, there cannot be any absolution. It is a high risk. One other thing I might add, from an analysis perspective, we do a biological analysis, a microbiological analysis throughout the system on a given time. By the time you see that boil water order, you've been drinking the water for three days because it takes time to cultivate the analysis at a microbiological level. It has to be incubated. So we don't get results for at least 24 hours after a sample, and then actions would have to be taken after that. But you have, on any analysis that we take, no matter what the contaminant it is, by the time you're notified, you've already been drinking it.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran. First off, I'm not denying that something needs to be done. My family members, my friends, myself were made sick by the boil water order, but that was operator error. The price of this, I believe, to be too high. We have, in the beginning of July, I believe it is, 10 million in expired debt, and we're literally tripping over ourselves to spend it someplace. If there was pre-treatment in the pond, we would be able to lessen the degree of filtration. You'd be able to lessen the high-energy intensive methods needed. Also, what makes me uncomfortable is, you can see this room is filled with people. They're not all here for this. A lot of them are here for the water tower in Valleymead. The same engineers that engineered that faulty water tower are engineering this project. Every town should flush their water system at least once a year. Our water system hasn't been completely flushed in greater than a decade.
Mr. Fineran, I ask you to stick to the.
This is all part of the water system, sir. It is. If you put clean water into dirty pipes, how far do you really get? I think this is just too expensive a toy. You saw the picture where the inlet was in the pond. That pond should have two inlets. They should be in the deep water. When the algae bloom starts to grow, you can see it. It gets drawn down into that corner, and we continue to draw that. When you see that the algae bloom is getting close to the inlet, you shut that inlet off and you move it to an inlet in the cleaner part of the pond. It greatly reduces the amount of filtration that is needed. And as I say, this is just too expensive a toy, and just because we have the money doesn't mean we have to spend it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Enoz. I would just like to add that I'm pregnant with my first child and was advised by my healthcare practitioners not to drink the Falmouth water. So for me, cost is not the priority. I think the health of Falmouth citizens and the future citizens of Falmouth is the priority in this case.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience in the back?
My name is Grant Walker. I live at 71 Philadelphia Street, and I'd like to request that while we are waiting for the new filter system, that there be some way we could get advice as to what kind of filtering we might do at our own homes. I, I don't know if she's here tonight because I've never met her in person, but I've spoken to Mary Beth Weiser on the phone several times. She's been tremendously helpful to me and given me a great deal of time. I think she's a fantastic person for the town. And what I'm requesting, recommending is that in the meantime, if there's somebody in the town that we could go to, I don't think we could all go to Mary Beth Weiser, but just to get advice as to what we might do to filter our water while we're waiting for the new system to come on.
I think a couple of quick things. I would not necessarily go with a whole-house filtration system. Pure water filters, Brita water filters and the like are very effective as what's known as POU filters. You put them on the faucet where you would normally drink water and/or wash vegetables. They are very effective, and they do live up to their claims. The other type would be the refrigerated pitcher, if you will, where you buy a Brita pitcher, pitcher, and pour water in the top. It goes through activated carbon, then it goes into the pitcher. You put it in the refrigerator, keeps it nice and cold that, so that in the meantime would be helpful and beneficial. And as far as anyone who has any questions, please feel free to contact Mary Beth Weiser, who is the town's water superintendent, myself, at any time. I've always been happy to talk about this with anyone. All right? So I welcome that.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Last questions or comments from the board?
I just want to make a statement, and that statement is, in the last 20 years, there is not, in my mind, been a project that is more important than this project moving forward. It is the basic principles of life. You need air to breathe and water to drink, and we need good, clean water to drink. Our community will be judged in the generations ahead based on whether we were able to supply good, clean, drinkable water to our citizens. I think this is a reasonable investment. This is something that has its time. It has a plan to move forward, and it is, in fact, probably, in my mind, the most important thing in the last 20 years that this community has embraced. People can be naysayers and say that we're going to do too much, it's going to cost too much. I'm going to say to you all that this, the time is now because there's no better time than the present. It's unfortunate, but we do have a surface water supply in this community. That means we have a big pond. Most communities have wells. We do not have enough capacity to do that, and it would take years and years to get enough wells permitted to be able to supply the people of our community with that water. So I am begging folks to vote for this because I think it's the most important thing that you will face in your generation in this community. Thank you.
Any last comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm asking if the board would vote to accept Public Works Director Ray Jack's report, including the preferred filtration plant site, if that would be, if the board would so desire.
Well, we've already done that in essence. I'm a little confused as to why we would do that. Oh, the site, I'm sorry.
Including the. Including, which includes the site.
Okay. All right. Well, if we need to vote for the site.
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Next item on our agenda is a wastewater presentation. We have the Water Quality Management Committee here for this, I believe.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It's a standing room only evening, so we were out in the hall. I appreciate the board asking the Water Quality Committee to, to make this presentation on question one. We, it's probably the most complicated issue I have ever dealt with. I never really planned to end my political career immersive wastewater, as I have been for the last four years, but it, it's been an education, and I'm going to share as much of it as I can with you. The board will be familiar with a lot of this, but a lot of the people in Falmouth will not be familiar with it. As you know, we, we go through this process of trying to produce the best possible package for the board of selectmen, and then for the town meeting, and the finance committee, and the planning board. But in the end, it's the voters who get to speak on this, and they'll be speaking in two weeks, and a lot of them, I think, will appreciate the chance to hear sort of the, the picture as a whole as best as we can give it. We've also, some people in the room have received and have prepared a list of questions, unanswered questions, they say, about this topic, and I hope to be able to work some answers to these questions into the presentation tonight. So, so let me, let me start out. The text of the ballot question, most people probably haven't seen that, but that's what it is, basically asks the town to support the town meeting vote in funding these various components of the town's water, water quality plan. The four major pieces in this question one are the Little Pond Sewer Project, the Bournes Pond Inlet Widening Project, some treatment plant upgrades, and the Woods Hole Infiltration and Inflow Project for a total price of $49,820,000, which, as we all recognize, is an enormous amount of money, but it's an enormous undertaking that this town has committed itself to. And I would say, we should be proud of having gotten to this point. We have 15 estuaries in this town, more than any other town in Massachusetts. Every one of them is in trouble. Other towns in the Cape have looked at this problem and said, no, we just don't want to do anything. Falmouth hasn't done that. Falmouth looked at it in a particularly Falmouth way and said, we're going to define this problem, we're going to work it down into the manageable pieces, we're going to work it down into the least-cost option that we can, and we're going to go forward with it because that's the key. The easiest thing to do is say, no, we just do nothing. It's not a long-term answer. It's not an answer at all, but it's not the answer that Falmouth is, is proposing. The biggest piece of the project is the Little Pond Sewering. Little Pond is the small body of water between Falmouth Heights and Maravista. It is an enormously developed section of town, the most densely developed section of town by far. Many of the houses are on 5,000-square-foot lots or four, even less. You're talking about eight or 10 houses per acre in this part of town. They were built quite a few years ago. They're very, they're very crowded, and many of them are still on seppalts, and the wastewater that is generated in those houses goes straight into Little Pond, which is the reason Little Pond is the most degraded water body in the whole town. As you can see on the map, it's, the area includes eastern part of the Heights, Maravista, basically up to Maravista Avenue, then over to, including the T-Dicket School, then over to Route 28, T-Dicket Highway, and then it comes down, includes the commercial area down to about the Admiralty. Then it cuts across Spring Bar's Road and encompasses the rest of the eastern portion of the Heights. The area was designated just because it is the Little Pond catchment area. For all the water that lands in that area, all the, all the waste that goes into those septic tanks and seppalts goes to Little Pond. It's an interesting area. There's almost 1,500 parcels there. Only 27% are owner-occupied as principal residents. Over half are vacation homes and rentals, and the last 20% are the commercial area and the senior housing and the motel and things like that. Okay, I'll back up in a minute, so let's, let's finish on this Little Pond. You're talking about sewering 1,500 homes here. This particular part of town was in the plan that the town put together in 1983 when we first had built the sewer that now exists. At that time, they said, look, these lots are too small, these houses are so small they go, they can't operate efficiently or effectively or environmentally soundly. Even back then, it was agreed that that was phase two for this town's sewer planning. The town never did it. It would have cost $3.5 million back then. We didn't do it. The federal government and the state were paying 80% of the cost at that time. We didn't do it. We're doing it now with, with the help of the voters.
Mr. Chairman, could you just remember to speak towards the microphone so folks at home can hear?
I will, thank you. The second part of this four-part project is the Bournes Pond Inlet Widening. The existing inlet is 50 feet wide. The best science we have says that if you widen it to 90 feet, you will be able to increase the flow in and out of that water body so that the equivalent of sewering 400 homes, that amount of nitrogen will come out of, out of Bournes Pond. That makes it very cost-effective, and it would involve a new bridge, and it would involve a fishing platform and some changes in the groynes, but basically, it's widening and increasing the flow, and that's the second part of the project. The third and fourth part are, are things that are not in my area of expertise. There's a whole bunch of things that need to be done at the existing sewer plant to bring it up, up to par, and frankly, to make sure that any additional flow doesn't impair the, the quality of the effluent. Right now, our sewer plant is producing the best quality effluent of any sewer plant in Massachusetts. Three, three parts per milliliter of nitrogen come out of that plant. Drinking water standards call for 10. So it's really quality effluent, if there is such a thing, and you want it to stay that way. And the last piece is in Woods Hole, where we have the pipes in the ground in certain locations, in fact, all of them are older than I am, and they're going to put some linings in where some of them have developed a leak. This will prevent saltwater and groundwater from infiltrating into the pipe and going up to the plant and being treated, which, you know, we don't want to treat that up at this plant. We want to prevent it from getting up there, and that's what this will do. These last two pieces are the result of a settlement agreement between the town and the DEP and the Coalition for Buzzard Bay, which was reached back in December of 2012. So those, those two pieces are essentially mandates. We've agreed to them, and the, the regulatory bodies have required them. These are the costs. As you can see, each project has its own cost, and previously voted costs include design and permitting. For Little Pond, it's $4.5 million, so the total cost that's left is $39.5. Bournes Pond Inlet Widening, the total cost is $5.52. We've already voted $300,000, and so what's left to be appropriated is the $5.22. Treatment plant improvements, the cost is $5.2 million, and when the town already voted $800,000 for that, so there's $4.4 million left. Woods Hole Infiltration, the $700,000 needed for that. So that's how you get to the $49,820. At, at the town meeting, as you recall, it was, it was asked, what actually would this do to the tax rate if, if it were going to be increasing the tax rate? And the current tax rate is $8.15 a thousand. The impact of these is 12 cents per thousand, so a $400,000 home, the impact is $48 a year. If this gets voted down, everyone with a $400,000 home will get a $48 tax deduction, reduction. But there are other implications beyond that. But we want to emphasize, as we have mentioned all along, the reason we're doing this now is because of the window of opportunity that Pat Flynn referenced. It can be done without raising the tax rate, and that is key. As I mentioned at town meeting, I'm not foolish enough to think I can go to the voters and ask for this kind of money and tell them it's going to raise their taxes. We have an opportunity now to go to the voters and say, it won't raise your taxes, and that's why you're seeing both of these major capital projects here tonight at the same time and on the same ballot. So why are we doing this? And I don't, I think this needs repeating because Falmouth understands this and everybody else has been watching us deal with it. We have water bodies that are, that are in our town that are producing fish kills, algae blooms, oxygen depletion, and shellfish decline, and it's not, not just Little Pond, but many of the other estuaries are, are either impaired, well, they're all impaired, but some of them are more impaired than others, and Little Pond's the worst, but the others all have the same problem. And anybody who lives, has lived here for very long remembers perfectly well when we used to have scallops in Wacoit Bay in West Falmouth, and we used to have all kinds of shellfish in all kinds of places, and we used to have all kinds of fish in all kinds of places. And now we have very little of that, and we have water bodies that are bad and getting The original plan that the state of Massachusetts recommended to the town of Falmouth, which is their traditional position, is to take all of the water bodies that are most seriously impaired, the ones in, in the area that we're, we're looking at right now, all the way from Falmouth Harbor to Wacoit Bay and Sewerland. Harbor to Wacoit Bay and sew them. And they came to the town with that idea, and the town pursued it, and it got to the point where a price tag was attached to it, and six hundred million dollars was the price tag, and the town of Falmouth said, "No, we're not doing that." Not only because we don't have six hundred million dollars, which is a good reason, but because we think, in many cases, these estuaries can be cleaned up using other means for less money, and we're going to find out how to do that. So the six hundred million dollar project was rejected. The review committee was picked to look over ways to reduce the cost. The Water Quality Committee succeeded that group in trying to find ways to reduce the cost. And in terms of searing, what the Water Quality Committee ended up with was the most impacted water body in town, Little Pond. That we could justify searing. Because searing, after years of study and evaluation and everything else, for something that densely developed in that area, searing was the only feasible option. And I know other people will have suggestions that that may not be true. We can strongly defend that position based on everything we know and everything we've Alternatives are an equal part of what the town is going to do, and has been doing. In fact, the town of Falmouth has been a leader, not only in Cape Cod, but in the whole state, as far as pursuing alternatives. What you find with alternatives in a lot of these conversations is, I've heard of something really neat that somebody does somewhere else, and we've followed up on hundreds of those thoughts, and what we usually find, in fact, what we always find, is that alternatives are an idea, in many cases, a good idea. In many cases, scientists think they might be a great idea. When we ask, "Have you ever tried it out in a place where there's a large quantity of effluent to be treated, or a large, you know, massive houses to be dealt with or businesses?" Well, no. No, it actually hasn't ever been done anywhere like that. Well, that's what we kept running up against in this whole pursuit. So what we ended up doing is saying, "You know what? Falmouth's going to have to do this itself. We're going to have to be the pioneers here on these things." So we're pioneering with the Bourne Pond Inlet Widening, which is part of this bond issue. We're pioneering with the Shellfish Agriculture Program. Folks in the Heights have been watching this summer while we put a million little oysters out there, and to see how the oysters would do. The oysters did pretty well. Some of them did not do so well this winter. Half of them died this winter, the ones that went to sleep off-site. But we're coming back with two million next year. We're going to make, we're going to see what they can do. We're talking about oyster reefs. We are going to be the first town that actually addresses nitrogen issues with shellfish. But it won't be in Little Pond. It won't be in Little Pond because the quantity of nitrogen in Little Pond is just so gigantically more than it is in any other estuary. We have fifteen estuaries, and a lot of them are this close to being okay, to meeting their team daily. Little Pond is not even close. Little Pond has point eight-two milligrams per liter of nitrogen, and to get to a healthy state, it has to have point four-five. And that is way more nitrogen than all the oysters. If you filled every inch of Little Pond with oysters, you could not reduce it by that amount. So they aren't going to work there. They'll work in other places, they aren't going to work there. But we're going to find out where they will work, and we will try to make them work there. Permeable reactive barriers is another project where Falmouth is actually doing something about it, instead of just reading scientific papers and speculative essays. We are doing it. We hired consultants, and I figured out what can and can't be done with permeable reactive barriers. You can't run them up and down the streets of Seaco Shores or many other neighborhoods because they involve digging a forty-five-foot-deep trench up and down the street. And those people, in fact, nobody will be able to put up with that, and we're not going to pursue that anymore. There's a possibility that it can work with injection. Injection wells, sort of like fracking, if you don't mind the analogy, where you go into the ground and you put what you want in the ground. And if you put a carbon source in the ground and create a wall of it, it's entirely possible that that may turn out to be a suitable way to deal with nitrogen in some of these other locations that we're looking at. Fertilizer control, you're all familiar with what Falmouth has done with that. Not only were we the pioneers in creating a fertilizer control bylaw that actually had some teeth, but we had to go to the legislature to have them act to make sure that we could do it, because the Attorney General said we couldn't, but we do. We went there, and we're doing it. And the final one, of course, is the Eco Toilets, and you've all heard a lot about that. It's an experiment. Again, we need to find out if the nitrogen that doesn't go into the Eco Toilet but continues to go into the ground, whether that nitrogen is a lot or a little. If it's a lot, Eco Toilet's not going to be the answer anywhere. If it's a little, Eco Toilets may be the answer somewhere. A lot of other issues with Eco Toilets, consumer acceptability, cost, lots of issues. But this is what this committee and this town and this Board of Selectmen has been doing for the last three or four years, is looking at every one of these things in a way to see, can we make it work, and where can we make it work? Okay, we have some disadvantages to delaying, and I'm going to list a few of the more prominent ones, because there is, as we know, some enthusiasm for the do-nothing option. And the first thing I'd like to point out is, this plan proposed in question one includes funding for searing Little Pond and Bourne Pond. We have pursued these alternatives, as I've described, but I think it's fair, in fact, I will take it as a fact, that there will never be an approvable plan that has no searing anywhere in this town. You cannot deal with places that have ten homes per acre and say, "An alternative is going to work here." There are places where it will work. We have fifteen estuaries, and we have a lot of different situations, and everyone is going to be dealt with on his own. But to say that there is a way out there to deal with something that doesn't involve any searing in this town is misleading people. Okay, another reason not to delay is, as I mentioned earlier, if we'd sewer Little Pond in eighty-three, it would've cost three and a half million dollars, and the state was paying eighty percent of it. Construction costs for major infrastructure projects like this only go up, and regulatory requirements only go up. There is another fantasy out there that technology is so wonderful, and new ideas are being created so terrifically, that these costs are going down. That has not been the case anywhere. Disadvantages of the delay, number three. The regulatory requirements, as I mentioned, will only increase. This approved comprehensive wastewater management plan only requires searing in the lower Little Pond area, the smallest possible area, with the most economically effective searing. Obviously, if you stretch a sewer line out around half-acre lots, you've got a lot more sewer line per house. In this area, you have a very short sewer line per house. It makes it economically doable where it wouldn't be in other places. The other half of the plan is the alternative demonstration project. This plan was not easy to sell, as your town manager and your town leaders will tell you. The state DEP hated the idea of approving any plan that didn't say, "You have to sewer everything south of Route 28. Just tell us how long you're going to take to do it, and when you're going to do it." And they don't care where the money was going to come from or when. That was their position, and they were very hostile to the Falmouth plan because it only included this very small area around Little Pond, and it included all these alternatives. DEP almost succeeded in sinking this plan. But thanks to the leadership of the town and the leadership of our legislative delegation and anybody else who we could drag to the table, we got them to agree to this plan. If this plan goes down, they will be able to say, "I told you so," and they will be able to come back to Falmouth and say, "You know, you had your chance. Now, here's what we need to see you do, and it won't be pretty." The ability to fund this project without causing an increase in the property tax will end if we do not do it now. Pat explained that around the water project. It's absolutely true. This is a window that is not going to be around. If we come back in three or four years, no one will be saying, "You can do it without raising taxes." They will be saying, "We have a mandate to do it, and you've got to raise the taxes." I don't want, I'm not going to be around here to present that plan, but I hope we won't have to. Another disadvantage of the delay is the zero percent state revolving fund loan, which will save the town almost a million dollars a year in interest. If we don't go ahead with this by October, the commitment to that will expire. No. So the town has really done an amazing job of putting pieces together to, all leading to this point. You know, the low-interest loans, the plan, that's the minimal plan instead of the maximum plan. Everything the town has done has been aimed toward making this as affordable for the town and for the homeowners as possible, and making it as progressive as possible. We're not just trying to build sewers here. We're trying to solve a problem, which is fifteen estuaries, which are the lifeblood of every community, every village in this town. We want those estuaries to come back, and we're going to find a way. Now, some of these unanswered questions that have been brought up here, is it affordable? On the twelfth, the selectmen are going to be hosting a meeting for the folks who will be impacted by the sewer, who will have it go by their house and will be expected to hook up to it, about whether it is affordable or not. Our committee spent a lot of time, and the selectmen spent a lot of time, making sure it would be affordable. We passed special legislation to make it affordable for the people who are going to have to pay this thing. Anybody else who's had to pay for sewer betterments anywhere else in the Commonwealth will tell you that the possibility of paying as little as six hundred dollars a year for a sewer betterment is an amazing bargain. And I know if you're old and poor, or you're young and poor, six hundred dollars may be a burden. It's less of a burden, fifty dollars a month is less of a burden than anyone else is likely to be paying anywhere else. And in this particular part of the town, it is, there is a real benefit to these people that wouldn't be necessarily true in other parts of town, which is right now, because they all live in these small lots with these cesspools and septic tanks, a lot of them can't add on to their houses because they can't meet Title V. When the sewer goes by their house, they will be able to add on to the house. They can add a garage, or expand the kitchen, or add a bedroom. Right now, a lot of them can't. So we're not hearing too many complaints out of the Heights and out of Mary Vista as a result of this plan. There are low-income people who, for any additional expense, would be a burden, and this committee and this board of selectmen have put together several very advantageous financing options for all those people, ranging from a deferral, complete deferral, if your income is below forty thousand dollars, to a tax credit, to an interest loan for the hookup. Every piece of the financing here has been addressed, and I hope anyone who's here from the Heights or Mary Vista will come to this meeting the selectmen are sponsoring on the twelfth, and ask your particular questions about the financing. I think most people will walk away saying, "We can do this." Some of these other points that they've raised here, the language about whether this sewer system has been touted as the last that will be built in Falmouth. The only person I can remember who ever used that phrase was Mr. Fenneren at one of our public meetings. I have often said that I hope it'll be the last one, and I have certainly said that I won't be around for the next one. But will this be the last? I don't know. What about West Falmouth, they say? We're not doing West Falmouth, we're not proposing West Falmouth. West Falmouth is off the table. West Falmouth can be dealt with with alternatives. What about the rest in all the other towns? And then they talk about new legislation. We passed legislation called an Act to Reduce Costs to the Homeowners. That's the legislation they're complaining about. They can explain why they think that's a bad idea. Unresolved problems with grinder pumps. True enough. Some people in the Heights will be having grinder pumps because they're in low-level areas, and it's more economic to have a system where theirs gets pumped up to the main rather than down. Grinder pumps have been working in this town for fifteen years without a problem. Anyone who thinks they're a problem has not paid attention. This committee went over to Mother's Vineyard and to two towns in the vineyard and one in, and to Hyannis, and we looked at each one of them. They all have grinder pumps. They do not have the kind of problems that people are speculating may come of this. They have either one call a month in O Plus out of hundreds of grinder pumps, and usually it's because somebody put their kid's toy down the toilet, and, you know, the grinder pump couldn't handle it. Another question they have is about, "What if electricity goes off?" Well, the grinder pump people will find that for a few days of no electricity, nothing will happen. Usually, when we're getting down the weeds here, now, I'm sorry, but it's good to answer these questions while people are asking them. If you have a grinder pump, the chances are very good that the wastewater will not be coming into your system when the electricity is out. You don't run your dishwasher, you don't run your laundry, you don't take hot showers. A lot of things you don't do when there's no electricity. So the volume of water that goes into your pump is vastly reduced. And over in the island, we asked them, "What did they do there?" They said, "The town comes around and basically jumpstarts, gives you a little electric jolt to get your pump going when the electricity's out." And that's what they do there. It's not an insuperable problem, and it hasn't been a problem for the units in Woods Hole for the last fifteen years. Why are the lower-cost alternatives dismissed for Little Pond? I think we've addressed that. Little Pond is too far gone. No one can realistically say that these alternatives are going to be the answer for Little Pond. Other estuaries? Yes. Little Pond? No. It's just a given. Other Cape towns have voted down the sewers. Well, other Cape towns have taken the do-nothing option, and that's what other Cape towns can do. We're not doing that here. Falmouth, United Board of Selectmen, unanimous Board of Selectmen, an overwhelming vote in town meeting, a unanimous planning board, a unanimous finance committee, every inch of the way, this project has gotten support from every part of this town government. It's time to do it. It's the most effective way to do it, and we recommend that the town do it. Be happy to answer any further questions.
Questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? I'll take names.
Good evening. Peter Wildstorf, Precinct One, Treasurer of the Plan B Committee, which is the officially registered town committee opposing question one and asking you to vote no on question one. I'd like the opportunity to give a brief rebuttal to what we've heard tonight, a condensed version of our ten points in opposition to question one. First, to take care of a couple of misconceptions, there is no state requirement to sewer. Thanks to the hard work of the Water Quality Management Committee, the state has altered its guidelines for comprehensive wastewater planning to include alternatives to searing and adoptive management. We do not have to sewer because the state says so. Second misconception is that there is no state mandated deadline. The Department of Environmental Protection requires only that progress is being made in the town's wastewater cleanup efforts. That means that Falmouth can take the time to do more than give lip service to alternatives, but to actually test alternatives and implement those which are most efficient and cost-effective before we resort to very expensive sewers. We've heard of other towns on the Cape, Yarmouth in September of two thousand and eleven and Orleans in June of two thousand and thirteen, who voted down sewer plans. They have not had any lawsuits instituted against them because they voted those sewer plans down. It's a scare tactic. We need to think about this, we need to think about all our options, take the time and get it right. And speaking of time, we've heard that time is our enemy. We've also heard a rebuttal of it from these very folks who said it. Three and a half years ago, the only option to dealing with wastewater in Falmouth in our estuaries our estuaries was a $600 million plan to sewer all of Route 28, south, all the land south of 28, and some of the parcels north of Route 28. Because we've taken the time to explore technology and alternatives, we've greatly reduced the proposed cost of that system, although we haven't heard a final one. We continue to make progress in Falmouth, we're meeting the DEP requirements, we're far ahead of all the other towns on the Cape. And then we keep hearing about this window of opportunity for retired debt. We have heard people mention for the first time that if we don't take advantage of this, we'd actually get a tax decrease. But what's much more likely and probably preferable is that we consider how this amount of money can best be spent, and we have a school budget which is underfunded, we have a town pension fund which is $90 million underfunded. And the question is, do we want to take a chance on expensive sewers, or do we want to take our time and decide what needs most of that money right now in terms of priorities? We're eventually going to have to repair all 14 to 15 of the estuaries, and we need to keep that thought in our mind. The 40, roughly $40 million which would go towards sewer-ing Little Pond is just the first step. Alternatives to sewers can more quickly reduce the nitrogen loading of our waters. Sewers would immediately stop the flow of nitrogen into the ground, but there's legacy pollution of septic that's already in the ground, which moves at the rate of 1 to 3 feet per day, which will add nitrogen for years to come. Oyster beds, floating vegetative beds, phyto buffers, bio cord, all act directly and immediately to reduce nitrogen in polluted waters. They also work to reduce the natural aquatic ecosystems, which sewer technology does not. Are alternative technologies pie in the sky or mere hopes? Eric Turkington has written in the Falmouth Enterprise two weeks ago, and I quote, "The work this town has begun on alternative demonstration projects is recognized by the Environmental Protection Agency as cutting-edge science that will show the whole nation how to deal with nutrients in estuaries." We are told there would be no more sewers after Little Pond, because alternatives will be used instead. Either alternatives are a valid way to address our water pollution problems, or they're pie in the sky. But they can talk out of both sides of their mouths, saying, we're not going to have any more sewers because we're using alternatives, but you folks are dreaming pie-in-the-sky solutions because alternatives don't work. The folks who live, there are many, many, many low and fixed income residents in the Little Pond watershed who will be unduly burdened by an annual betterment payment of at least $600 for the next 30 years, plus the cost of sewer hookups of $2,500 to $4,000 a year, plumbing changes that require destruction of septic tanks, landscape restoration, maintenance electricity for pumps, and annual sewer bills. According to one of the forms which we've, which have been given, and which have been very useful, we were shown that the annualized payments for those folks living in a sewer district will be to the tune of $1,123 to $1,248 per year, not the $600 we've heard repeated, and that's for a house whose average value is $400,000. It is not a scare tactic to mention these actual costs. These are real costs that came from members of the Water Quality Management Committee. Nor is it helpful to dismiss these costs as hardly onerous, or the usual costs that homeowners feel. And we have yet to hear a definitive reply to the point raised in town meeting, that some mortgage holders may not allow deferments of betterments for seniors and others. It's an important question, it needs to be answered, hopefully in time for next Monday's meeting with the residents. On the larger-scale question, we've just had one of the last installments of the International Panel on Climate Control report on climate change. The Cape is going to feel the effects of climate change much more than any other area in the country. Every time we have a major infrastructure project with a major bill attached to it, we need to know all the costs, not just the dollar amounts, including a life-cycle analysis of the emissions of greenhouse gases. If we don't start this now, we hear talk of a carbon bomb in the Arctic, we hear changing ocean currents, we can't tell our kids, we had a chance to do something, and we didn't really want to deal with it. We need to know these figures in the future for all infrastructure projects. Sewers aren't the best technology for improving the environment. The EPA has determined that sewers cause unintended damage through pollution, CO2 emissions, and pharmaceutical contamination. They waste resources and nutrients, they have the highest life-cycle course, and they are larger public risk than other alternative technologies. On the question one wording itself, we should have been allowed to vote on each section. If the state mandates some repairs to our sewer system, we should have been given those questions separately. Trust the voters, trust our intelligence, don't lump it all together, and tell us that some things we have to vote for because the state mandates, and oh, by the way, there's $30 million of sewer costs also bundled in together with that. Respect our intelligence, give us the facts, let us vote separately on each of those. If question one is voted down, and I sincerely hope you will all do what I did, last year I had vote yes on question one signs out in front of my house. I'm a town meeting member, I've tried to attend all the forums, I've listened carefully to debate, I've gone to the UU forums on economic justice and climate justice, I've tried to take all this in, and I very slowly changed my opinion by 180 degrees. I have friends on both sides, listen to our debates, listen to the facts, wait them before the election. Please vote no on question one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Grant Walker, 71 Philadelphia Street, and I would like to hear, if there are, the specific benefits of sewer-ing the Little Pond area for people in the town outside the Little Pond area. Are there benefits to the whole town for sewer-ing the Little Pond area? That's what I would like to hear.
The brief answer is that there are beaches and other public access to Little Pond, which until the pond gets cleaned up, those areas are compromised. There's probably more detailed answers that can be provided, but I want to try to give everyone in the public an opportunity here, speak, and I'll give the Water Quality Management Committee the last word to try to address some of these things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt McNamara. This evening, on several other occasions, Eric Turkington has made a promise to the homeowners in the Maravista and Heights area, that if the sewer is passed, they will be able to add bedrooms and garages. Having had a 10-year familiarity with the zoning bylaws in this town, that is a false promise. Sewer may allow for additional bedrooms, but the zoning bylaw may not allow for additional bedrooms in such a dense area, and most likely would prohibit garages on such densely populated areas. So, I just want to correct that false promise.
I'll put you on the list.
Attendant, Sheriff, Precinct 6, Old Dock Road, West Falmouth. Last fall, town meeting passed an article that asked the selectmen and the superintendent of schools to have their budget directors report to us on overrides. As we all know, they have something to hide, because they didn't do it. And I'd like to know, first of all, what are we, where is this, oh, it money coming from? Things are retiring. What's retiring? I couldn't find that on these two pages of debt that we have in our ballot book. My next thing is, why, why are we hurrying? There's only so much money. Oh, a Little Pond, we are not going to clean it. We haven't been able to clean West Falmouth Harbor in how many years? 15, 18? We're not going to even start to clean, oh, Little Pond. We ought to try and open it up, try and flush it some way. But that's down the road, which is going to cost, oh, it big bucks. I think we should work on one project. We have all kinds of things on this one question. You brought it to us at town meeting as a last article, when everybody was talking, and then back again the next night, when everybody didn't want to be there and wanted to get out. Don't force us. Let us think about it. Let us work it out. We don't have the answers. We don't know what these houses are going to have to pay, oh, down there with their new flood insurance, which nobody seems to know anything about. Let's wait. Let's do as many trials as we possibly can before we sewer. Thank you.
Mr. Woodwell, I believe?
I'm George Woodwell. I professionally think about these issues, not this one in particular, but the issues in general, of how to make the world work as a biophysical system. People who are 40 years old now were living when there were half as many people in the world as there are now. Anybody over 40 lived in such a time. It's a different world, and it continues to change in the same ways, becoming ever more intensively used. In this case, we're thinking about how to move water from the uplands down through civilization, starting with water that's potable. Cleaning up the water we're using, running it through civilization mostly to move trash, sewage, take it somewhere else and get rid of it, and dump the water, in this case, into the coastal zone. As we get bigger, as the population increases, town increases, we use more of it. And that makes the demand greater. At the upper end, we have to produce more clean water, another great expense. The way to get more water is to use it differently, not use it to move trash, but to use it in the ways that are essential for human life, to preserve the human birthright to clean water, but not pollute it along the way. So, in this new world, we have to separate the uses, so that the trash is handled in a different way, not just through a sewage treatment plant, dumping the water, still only partially renovated into the coastal zone, and the nutrients dumped otherwise. We have to recover the nutrients, put them back into the agricultural system if we can, but certainly not put them in a place where they contaminate the coastal waters. So, thinking about that, we can back off and say, well, let's wait and develop these technologies for separating the sewage from the important clean water, keeping the water clean, and if we do that, we don't have as much water to dump, don't have to run pipes everywhere, don't have to dig up a lot and spend $50 million. We can do it in a different way. We have the money to do it, the time, the opportunity, the imagination. So, I would say, back off and think about it a bit more, because it is a different world. Thank you.
Hi, Douglas Brown, Precinct 9. You know, the ideological discussion about global warming and stuff is valid, but we've got a real common sense plan. We've got a sewer pipe that extends now down to Spring Bar's Road. This plan calls for completing that circuit and doing the rest of the business area. You're never going to do that with eco toilets or anything else. So, you know, the sewer-ing of the houses is a part of it, but the business district is important, too. And I hope this plan moves forward, because there's always going to be people who say, it's too much money. It's always going to be. I hope we keep moving.
Good evening. Edward Jallic, Alma Road, resident of the proposed sewer area. I really hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but a couple of points I would like to make. I'll try to be brief, but if so many issues, it'll be hard. First of all, haste makes waste, an old adage, very appropriate. Hurry up, the window of opportunity will close. Hurry up, the state's going to make us do something. If we hurry into action, I seem to remember hearing similar things when the state had a great deal for us. We've got these wind turbines that nobody else really wants. Better take them, because it's the best deal you'll ever find, and we know where that got us. And unfortunately, I see some of the same faces making this proposal to us. Beware of haste makes waste. It's something my grandmother used to say. She was very wise. Septic, by the slides that were presented at some of the other meetings that I attended, account for 40% of the nitrogen in Little Pond. So, even if sewer-ing removed all of the nitrogen, people are shaking their heads, but those were slides presented by the Water Quality Management Committee. And we're not proposing to sewer the entire Little Pond watershed, just the lower portion. So, it's not going to get rid of all of the septic-induced nitrogen. In fact, some years ago, when a group of us citizens were fighting a big condo development on Little Pond, a lot of studies were made by state people, and Bryant House, the UMass-Dartmouth people, the AMIPA project, and they made statements to the effect that the lower 25 to 30% of the Little, of the Heights and Maravista peninsulas did not impact Little Pond. Their nitrogen flowed directly into Vineyard Sound. And yet, this plan, which the committee worked on for many years, many, many hours, and they should be congratulated and thanked for their efforts, but I find it somewhat flawed, because we're talking about sewer-ing those portions of the Little Pond area, the Maravista and Heights peninsulas, that don't flow into the pond. And yet, we're ignoring some of the highly distressed areas north, the Perch Pond area that a gentleman mentioned at town meeting. Pictures of the Fish Gill, that was Perch Pond. And it's very close to where this proposed loop is, but we're not going there. It's, I think, a flawed plan, because we're rushing into something, we haven't really analyzed all of the engineering, all of the data of what is impacting Little Pond. We're ignoring widening the inlet of Little Pond, probably the single most quick impact to cleaning up the pond. That will help to flush out the sediment that's in there, the atmospheric nitrogen, the nitrogen from fertilizer, and that bylaw sounds great, but there is no teeth to fertilizer bylaw. There's no enforcement, there's no penalty. It's nice on paper, but in fact, will have no impact. But if you widen the inlet, that nitrogen that comes off the lawns at least has an opportunity to be flushed out. It should be a number-one priority. Lastly, I just touched briefly on the financial, one of the benefits supposedly, and something that will help to alleviate the impact of the cost of roughly $100 a month, $1,200 a year for the residents, and that doesn't include, you know, a new grinder pump, and I've priced those out, they're anywhere from $1,000 to $4,000 each. You can defer it if you're over 65, at 8% per year. Now, 8% per year, it hasn't really been said whether that's compounded interest or simple interest. At simple interest, just 8% on the principal, after 15 years, that $18,000 becomes about $40,000. If it's compounded, in other words, the interest is added to your principal, and the following year, you're paying 8% on the previous year's interest, it becomes almost $60,000. The financial impact is severe. On my street alone, my portion of Alma Road, half the houses are seasonal, the other half are owner-occupied, and every one of those year-round residents, except for are owner-occupied, and every one of those year-round residents, except for one. One works. The others are all retired. Many of them are disabled. All of them are on very limited incomes. They might have a primary source of a social security check, might come to somewhere $12, $15,000 a year. These folks have told me, I can't afford this, I have no way to pay it, I'm going to have to sell my house, I don't know what I'm going to do. Please consider this as you decide how you're going to vote on this project. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Finnern.
Mark Finnern, a lot of this has been covered quite well by the others, but I'd just like to stress the fact that all the hard work that was done by the Water Quality Management Committee was enough to make the state and the county change its whole outlook on searing. The county, the 280 program, has one through seven steps, seven being the last, searing being the last of the seven steps. We're supposed to grab the low-hanging fruit. There are no plans to do that whatsoever. If you remember back here, just two months ago, they came with a proposal to close off many streets on Maravista. The road-water runoff is literally eroding that peninsula into Great Pond, and of course, to a lesser degree, it's happening in Little Pond. There is still no plan to deal with that. That's extreme low-hanging fruit. And it also, we need to preserve that peninsula. Supposedly, the road runoff into Little Pond amounts for about 20%. I attended many of the water quality meetings, most if not all in the first couple of years. I tried many times to bring this road-water runoff issue up. We had Scott Horsley from Horsley &amp; Witten come and demonstrate it, how easy it is, how low-cost it is. He does it all over the world. We have an expert right on our Conservation Commission, but we've never even attempted any of these things. This is being sold as it won't raise your tax inquiry. It won't increase your taxes. That's just not true. It may not increase the taxes for 18 of 20 people in town, but tell that to the person who lives in Little Pond. There's a man who lives down the street from a house that we own on Maravista. His property taxes are $850 a year. By the time he pays his betterment, installation fees, and his water rates triple, his taxes are going to basically triple. It's just not correct. This is kind of incrementalism. We're told it's going to be dealt with one peninsula at a time. We're always told when we're discussing, by our Budget Director, when we're discussing finance and capital investments, that look at our capital plan. I have our capital plan here for fiscal year 2013 to 2022. It has us spending $545,272.50 on searing. It doesn't sound like $47 million to me. $47 million is just the start. I don't, I did say, this could be the last searing that's done in this town. That's correct. But we could do less. None of us that oppose this are of the do-nothing option mindset. We are the proceed slow and wisely option. Between these two projects, it's $100 million. People out there that are going to vote next May 20th, wrap your mind around that. It's too fast, it's too much. If we waited on both of these projects, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind, we could save at least $20 million, and that's just the minimum. It could be half. There's no need to rush into these things. And I hope the people out there that are paying the bill realize that. And also, what would be so wrong with your taxes going down for a while? You can just raise them again later on with another proposition, two-and-a-half override, and a wiser plan. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? Mr. Chairman, I understand that a lot's been said. If you could try to keep your rebuttals brief, because we do still have a long agenda ahead of us.
I'll keep mine very brief and turn the platform over to the brains of our committee, Virginia Valiela.
Virginia Valiela, Precinct 5. I sincerely am concerned about the questions that have been raised about this ballot question. The town has been working on water quality issues since 2007. So we're seven years into this planning process. We care about our coastal ponds, our shellfish and our boating. We want to be able to swim without worrying about coliforms and general disease. And we know that they're in trouble. You speak to anybody who has lived in this town a long time or vacationed in this town a long time, and they can personally give you examples of what it was and what it is now. The state has to carry out the Clean Water Act, that is a federal act, and the state has moved over time to study what are, obviously, when you look at it, the most impaired coastal ponds. And so gradually, over these past years, since about 2006, standards have been established for each of the ponds. It's been stated earlier that Little Pond is the most polluted, and we basically have to cup the load that's going in there practically in half, in terms of the immediate watershed around Little Pond, which was the map that was shown to you earlier. 100% of the septic load has to come out of there in order to get very close to, but not quite, reach the standard. And it was the vision of the Water Quality Management Committee that the alternatives would help to do the remaining piece, which is about 12%, to get us to the standards for cleaning up Little Pond. I'm saying this because the committee, all the way along, has tried to create as large a role for alternatives as we possibly can. But we also have to be realistic about what each particular alternative can do and how quickly it can do it. And it is clear that with the searing, you remove 100% of the septic load, because it just physically removes all the water from the area, and that we have a plant that is at 50% capacity, and we have existing mains in the streets and the pump stations going up to Blacksmith Shop Road that are at 50% capacity. So we have existing infrastructure that we can use. What does have to be constructed is the collection system, and it is a substantial collection system for nearly the 1,480 properties that we have here. And that is both an important business area for the town and an important seasonal area for the town. And that's part of our economy. So you don't really want to go down a road where your water bodies next to your rentals are getting worse and worse. So I'm prefacing my remarks before sort of going down the comments that I've made here from the various speakers, by saying that there is a standard that has to be met. And the state, to date, has not set a deadline, but it's because they're still finishing up setting the standards for all of the other coastal ponds. And once they've got the whole collection, then the towns are going to begin to see, you have to do something. It's in our own best interest to do something, because Little Pond is in such bad state. It is closed to shellfishing. You can't even grow shellfish to their standard size. You have to move them out because of the coliform count there. So it's got odors. The fish kill was in Little Pond, it was not in Perch Pond. It has algae blooms, and so it has a lot of issues. One gentleman asked, what are the other benefits outside of Maravista? I honestly believe it's because we are a seasonal community. We should be seen as taking care of our coastal waters, taking care of our beaches. We don't want to be known as having bad water to drink, and we don't want to be known as having bad water to swim in or boat in. I listened to the comment from the former chair from the ZBA. We know that the existing houses cannot add additional bedrooms. Obviously, with a sewer, that potential is out there. The zoning Board of Appeals reviews the circumstances on a lot-by-lot basis. And so we're not promising you can add a bedroom, but we're saying that clearly you couldn't before, and now you have the potential for that. West Falmouth Harbor was mentioned by Mr. Shearer. The public perhaps doesn't know that we're nearly at the standard for West Falmouth Harbor. We just have a small 2/100ths of a milligram per liter to go in terms of documenting removal nitrogen from that area. And we are looking at innovative alternative systems for the West Falmouth area to see if we can get that final step. So we have made progress in West Falmouth, and the existing project that we're talking about for Little Pond will not further impair West Falmouth. It goes into a different watershed. So I think that you can see that the committee is trying to look town-wide to make improvements to all of the estuaries, but we have 15. I mean, that's a tall order. So you have to work in a methodical way. And question one is the fruit of, since 2010, financial planning plus program planning to get us to where we are tonight. And so if you don't take advantage of all of that planning and say, no, let's just wait a couple more years and get some more information on the alternatives, you've really lost an opportunity to make a significant step forward, including the alternative of Bourne's Pond. The widening of that pond is our keynote demonstration project for inlet widening. The committee held a public meeting and notified the communities in the Bourne's Pond area and the Little Pond area. We were looking at widening. The residents that came from the Little Pond Falmouth Heights area said, we don't want you to widen Little Pond. We have low-lying properties, we're worried about high tides, worried about storm surges. And the people from Bourne's Pond said, we remember when George Souza opened it up to 50 feet, and boy, did that make a difference. We support you. And it turns out, George Souza, I knew George Souza, his original plan was 100 feet. And now that we've run the modeling, it turns out 90 is the optimum size, and that's what it's going to be. So if you're going to do a demonstration project and spend the town voters' money, obviously, you're going to do it where the public wants it and where there's a demonstrated benefit. So putting an alternative to widening Little Pond is not on the list. The permioactive barriers require a perimeter road. Maravista doesn't have a perimeter road. Great Harbors does, Seaco Shores does, so that's where we're looking for that. EcoToilets is a one-by-one property-owner decision, and we have tried extremely hard with putting a lot of human resources into it, and that's SIA, to try and get people enlisted. And we only have six people, and we originally notified 24,000 properties. So that's moving very slowly. So the alternatives will come through, but they're not ready now, whereas Little Pond can't be taken care of without searing. And it is ready to go, and we have financially planned it so that it does not impact other town projects, it does not impact your tax rate. And it uses this old debt being retired and new debt as the mechanism to do that. It's like paying off your mortgage and then deciding, I'm going to do a roof, or I'm going to buy a new car. So it's already in your budget in terms of expense. George Woodwell and the biophysical system, and George looks at the world, and he looks at very large ecosystems, fully agree that we have inherited the English system of taking clean water and then using it to carry away all our waste. That is going to have to be an entire cultural mindset change, and it needs, we need to do that. Mr. Jallowitz mentioned a number of things. I just want to mention about the new grinder pump again, that we did not find that to be an issue in Martha's Vineyard, in the two communities that do it. And we've used grinder pumps in Woods Hole in the low-lying areas for 15 years, and it's just not an issue. The 8% interest that is compounded, if you are deferred, if you are over 65 and have an income of less than $40,000, I do not believe it's compounded. We will verify that for the, but I'm virtually certain that it's not compounded. We are trying to go slowly and wisely, and we really think that we have done as much research as is humanly possible to present this to the town, and that if we stall and just wait, it will be another three-year wait minimum. The state is required for any alternative that we produce data for three years, and that's a minimum of three years, for them to evaluate. So you have a chance to improve the town in a carefully planned way that's financially neutral, and I think you should vote for question one. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say no, because at this point, we've got a lot of folks here that are waiting for other agenda items, and I apologize for you folks for waiting. I asked the presenters this evening to prepare brief 10- to 15-minute presentations, and clearly, the board may want to consider enacting some sort of policy in that regard, the way Town Meeting has, because I understand there's a lot of information, but sometimes we need to try to focus. The board's going to take a five-minute recess. We've all been sitting here for a few hours. Let's stretch our legs. We'll be back in five minutes. Don't anybody go far, because we're going to start up again.